Good evening. Per the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we will be audio and video recorded this evening. On tonight's agenda, the first item is the village at Norfolk. And Dan, if you can explain to us what these documents are that we're looking at, we'll get started.
So, I met with the developer's attorney, Chris, on November 2nd. And we essentially went through these competing drafts. As you know, I had a draft decision, I circulated that on September 20th. Chris drafted his own decision, he circulated that on October 12th. We had a meeting after that here, and you charged us to go back and reconcile these things. And, you know, my job as your attorney is to protect the interests of the town. And so that, the conditions that I drafted are with that lens. And Chris's job as a lawyer for the applicant is to protect his client's interests. So, Chris and I went through our drafts. It took a lot of time, but at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, we came out with a current draft, which I believe is reflected in, in the document that Chris provided this afternoon. Now, full disclosure, I haven't had a chance to go through that to make sure that what we talked about is fully incorporated. And, you know, Chris knows that because, so there's no surprise there, but that, I had a blank court hearing this afternoon, too. I just, we, this came in at 2:30, I just haven't had time.
So, what came in 2:30? Do we have a copy of what came in at 2:30?
Yeah.
No, they're all right there.
Yeah, we don't have a copy of what came in at 2:30.
Okay, this is what we're gonna be working with tonight, this one?
Is that what Dan's saying?
Yeah. Yeah, what Chris said today is what we should be looking at today.
This one, okay.
These are one for Kevin?
No, that's not it.
Yep.
That's not it.
How many did you have?
What?
All right, here's another one. Bob?
Make sure it's the same.
Yeah, we'll take a look now, please.
This one's thicker than the other one.
Two versions here?
Here's a thick one.
There are three versions, and they all look very different, so if it looks right...
The top says procedural history.
Yeah, well, they all say that.
In the middle, let's send it in the middle procedure.
Okay, I think, Mr. Chairman, just to help decipher, the version that I circulated this afternoon on page nine of seventeen, everybody looks on page nine of seventeen, you'll see a section that's highlighted at the bottom, says sales price.
Got it.
And that's, one of the issues we'll be discussing. So, if, if it's three lines, says the initial sales prices for the affordable units, and it's highlighted.
You got the wrong one.
The bottom of page.
You have the right one.
I got the right one. I got the right one. I need one more for Mr. Weider, please.
How are we with Kevin about? Jordan? How are we with Kevin?
We can share.
There you go, Chris.
That's fine.
Okay.
Just to confirm, on page 10 of seventeen, there is a similar highlight on the very next page at the bottom.
Phasing in of affordable units.
That's another issue to discuss tonight. So, just to sort of finish what Dan was describing, we had a meeting, we reconciled the, the two drafts, and we sorted through what I would describe as a lot of the legalese, to really narrow any open issues to the substantive development-based issues for the board to consider. So, I've highlighted what I would imagine to be the open issues in this draft, and you can see the highlights on the screen, and the highlights are in gray on the printed version. To the extent, you know, I think I covered everything. I, I sent an email to Attorney Hill with the bullet points, and obviously, if there's anything else that comes up, we can discuss, you know, where we go from here. So, with that, you know, if you want to start going through some of the issues...
Do you want to go through each one of these, or do you want to just focus on the highlighted sections?
I, I want to go through it, and, and I want to be able to go through my notes, because I haven't had a chance to, to look at his draft. So, I'd like to go through it slowly, but really only focus on the questions that we have for you folks, you know, policy decisions that need to be made. And then I'd recommend that we continue this for another night. We can close the hearing tonight, if you want. I don't see any reason to keep it open, but I think we need one more night to go, to fine-tune the draft decision.
Just with that said, is, is there any way, my understanding is that I think the issues that were raised last time at the last hearing, and the world of issues that we've narrowed since the last hearing, at least at our meeting, are relatively few. So, perhaps if the board, we'll see where we end up tonight, but if we do have some definitive decision on those open issues, the board does have 40 days to render a written decision following the board's vote. So, if the board were inclined, you know, upon resolution of any open substantive issues, to take a vote on our last and final, as far as the bulk of, you know, approving the project, or approving the project with conditions, perhaps we could get to the point where the board took a vote tonight to approve the project with conditions with such changes or, you know, modifications as Town Council, you know, would draft in the permit consistent with deliberations this evening. I think, I was actually just looking at the draft permit, and I noticed that the application was submitted November of 2016, so we have a nice anniversary to work with here, and I think it'd be a good thing if we could get it at least voted on within a year. And I know, you know, we made the comment at the outset that we're always happy to take the extra time where the board is working with the developer, but kind of harkening back to the basic idea that 40B is an expedited process, if there are a limited number of issues that we can get, get through tonight, the board has 40 days to actually file that written decision. So, that would be my suggestion, but obviously, we're at the mercy of the board, and we'll see how the board would like to handle it.
Okay, let's get started.
Yeah, will you advise on that, Dan?
What's that?
Will you advise on that comment, or?
I don't have, I don't think there's, I don't think there's an issue if the board is prepared to take a very simple vote, that you're gonna approve the project with conditions and leave it at that. The conditions are gonna be drafted, they're gonna be put into a written decision, and you're gonna take a final vote on the draft, on the decision. But you certainly could take a vote tonight to, that you're going to approve the project with conditions. I see no problem with that, if that's something that you folks want to do, and the applicant's asking for that, so if that's something you want to oblige.
As far as what we're doing now, from this moment forward, we're gonna go through this with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Joe, to answer your question, I think that our object, our objective tonight is to close the hearing, take a vote, and then we've got the 40 days to fine-tune any final decision. And we've done that in the past.
Right, and I don't disagree.
Yeah, we've done that in the past, on the past two or three 40Bs.
And one question for Chris. Anything that's highlighted in here is something that needs to be discussed tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I see highlights in other areas.
Right, some of them will take quick, some of them are easily resolved, and some of them are larger issues that you'll probably get some input from Town Council.
Sure. So, I guess, if you're gonna go through this, we'll hit the highlights as you get to them, Dan?
Yeah, I'd like to just go through it section by section. I, I want to go right to the conditions. The preamble stuff is, is more fluffy, you know, that's, that's, obviously, you want to be comfortable with it, but they're not conditions, they're essentially preamble, and we can, we can deal with that next time. The, the conditions of the meat and potatoes of the decision, we should really address all, any open issues, and any decisions that are higher level of decisions that the board needs to make, you should, we should talk about those tonight, and really focus on those. But as we go through it, if you guys want to just jump in and say, hey, I got something for A3, just interrupt me, all right?
Sure.
So, I'm just gonna start with Section A, and Section A is, you know, it's essentially, this is the project that's been approved, here are the plan sheets, no construction can start until we've got final verification that these plan sheets are, that, that any subsequent changes to the plan sheets have been approved and reviewed by the board. There, there are certainly gonna be conditions in here that require some tweaking, some changes to the plans. So, the board, the processes that the board will then get their final, final plans, probably show those to Bill McGrath, and make sure that those final, final plans are, are consistent with this decision, and didn't, didn't deviate from the previous iteration of plans. So, that's kind of what A, A2 deals with in A3. And A4 lists out all the plans, and again, we can, actually, probably a good idea to have Bill run through this between now and the next meeting to make sure it's complete. And then Section B, so Section B1 is...
Excuse me, is an extra copy?
No.
Here's an extra copy here.
All right. You want to follow along with us? Just so that, you're the only one here tonight, so he'll give you a special treatment.
I'm committed.
And, and not to sound rude, yeah, we've, we've closed the testimony part, but at least you can follow along.
Yes, I could be there.
All right, so Section B, the first section is a requirement that the applicant deposits some money into, more money into your 53G account to enable peer review. And so that, that initial deposit, you know, Chris has suggested 5,000, I think my draft had suggested 10. It's my experience, it typically is gonna take at least 10, but it, it's really not a, a major issue. If, if you get below 5, it's depleted, and the applicant has to replenish it, so...
Mike, do we have standard number for someone, I guess?
What was the one for, what was the number for the last project?
406.
Yeah, I believe it was, I believe it was five. I think, at the end of the day, the town has leverage. If there's no money to do peer review, everything grinds to a halt. So, it's in the developers', you know, the developers incentivize to make sure the town has the money to have construction monitoring as the project is continuing, because if there's no construction monitoring there, nothing happens. So, ultimately, the town has a trump card on that.
I'd like, I'd like to do it, since Dan is here, ask her whenever she notifies that, and she's, when you hold the paper...
Yeah, we've got great, great history with them.
Yeah, if it's somebody in, within 24 hours.
We have it checked within 24 hours.
So, 5,000?
5,000's fine.
Fine, okay. You know, I'll just skip, skip ahead here, unless you guys have any comments or questions on B, B12 is the...
Sorry, I would suggest that there was, I, I think it's important just to state one of the larger conceptual issues that Dan and I resolved, that was sort of in discussion at the last hearing, and I, I think we reconciled where we're at, and Dan can obviously follow up on that. But the final review is to ensure consistency with what the board has seen to date, okay? So, that list of plans is a list of all the plans that the board has reviewed, and that we have tweaked to meet the board's requests as far as what the project should look like. When we submit the final plans, in this particular instance, they're going to be these plans, okay? Unless Bishop has a change of heart tomorrow, and he wants to change things around, or if there's some final permitting issue with the septic system that requires us to tweak something, or if Jim wakes up in the middle of the night and says, oh, I forgot, I have to do this, those types of things might be changes. But one of the things that I tried to impress upon the board in this instance is that we've gone to great lengths to resolve all of these engineering issues that were raised, okay? These are fully engineered plans. In other projects, that might not be the case. We could have reserved things like groundwater mounding to post-permit, we could have reserved things like additional studies relative to wastewater management and infiltration of stormwater, but we didn't do that here. So, sometimes, Dan, in Dan's experience, the, the verbiage in the permit is to come back for additional technical review. In this instance, these plans are the fully engineered plans.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, that's, Bill's...
That's fine.
So, again, for what, for what Chris is saying.
Yeah, this goes to Section A2 and A3. So, again, I think I agree, I, I agree with the concept that Chris is saying. It's that you, you're approving a set of plans, which are listed under A4.
Right.
Okay, those are, we're calling those the approved plans, because you've approved, you're approving them through this permit. But there is inevitably gonna be tweaks and things that, that happen over the course of time between now and when they're ready to start construction. They're gonna, they're gonna submit a, the application for building permit, for foundation permits, they're gonna start, start building the road, you know, things get tweaked, and so, at that point, the question becomes, if, if there's gonna be, I mean, that, that's when these, these final plans are approved, and they become the final plans, and that's, we define that as final. And then even after that, there still could be small changes, or maybe big changes. And that's where A3 deals with, if, if there are changes to these plans that need to be approved by the zoning board, the zoning board can decide if these are substantial or insubstantial. If they're substantial, you have a hearing, if they're insubstantial, you can just vote on, vote on the change at a, at a regular meeting. That's all governed by regulations, it's not something we're making up, it's, there's a regulatory process for that.
So, we're confident?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Section B12 is, I think, what the first item that we wanted to flag for the board. It's been my practice in, in the towns that I work in, that we record the comprehensive permit plan, and just like if you had a subdivision, you record subdivision plans, you'd record probably multiple plan sheets. And, and that's been my practice with pretty much every town that I work in, is that the comprehensive permit plan gets recorded at the registry of deeds. And the, and the reason for that is, the buyers of these units, you know, people will be running title, and it's just convenient for the buyers, their lenders, their attorneys to see on paper what this project looks like, where the roads are, where the houses are, what the common areas are. So, for, really, just for, in the interest of clarity, we, we require these plays to be recorded, and Chris, your position is that you'd rather not record the plan, you're okay with recording the decision, so...
Yeah, I think the distinction was where this project is a condominium, when the master deed goes on record, a condominium plan will be recorded at that time, okay? If this were a subdivision, then sure, you record a definitive subdivision plan, and the things that you would normally record with a subdivision. But this is not a subdivision, it's a condominium, so recording a whole slew of schematics and plans that are not associated with the condominium, I described to Dan would actually be confusing from a title perspective. I just encountered this issue with Bishop's team in, in Norwell, and everybody agreed, no, 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 this is a condominium, we record the master deed that shows what the project has to look like. So, that's the distinction I'm making. I think Dan's other concern that he expressed was, they wanted to be able to reference something definitive in case there were changes during construction. Well, during, you know, construction, the plans are on record with the zoning board's office, you have a construction monitor that's, that's reviewing that sort of thing. So, putting a whole slew of engineered plan sets on record, from someone that does a lot of title work, I, I think that is, is more confusing of record than just having the master deed, here's what the project is going forward in perpetuity. And as far as any changes that might come up during construction, the plans are, you know, first of all, the plans are referenced in the decision, the decision gets recorded, and then someone would just go to the zoning board's office if they really had a question. But that's, that's really the distinction here, is that this is a condominium, I think, for our purposes.
Can we do something in the registry of deeds within 60 to 90 days, something like that? I mean, because the first part of the process is, is construction, there's no occupancy...
These plans will be recorded prior to the issuance of a building permit. So, they're not recorded until, they're, they're at that stage where they're actually applying for a building permit. And, and at that point, these plans have been approved by the zoning board.
Is, is it conceivable that the condo docs would be recorded prior to, to these plans?
No, the condominium documents generally recorded immediately prior to the first sale. So, once you get occupancy, the condominium documents go on record. The condominium documents, and there are provisions in here, get reviewed by Town Council to ensure consistency with the decision. My concern is, you have these plans, once the plans are recorded, if there's a change to the plan that happens down the line, which, which happens, you have to record a modification, and then you're dealing with a title issue. So, in order to avoid having to deal with title in perpetuity, the decision is, is primarily for construction purposes, which is why the decision gets recorded. Once the project's constructed, the plans don't have anything to do, you know, with the price of milk as far as the future's concerned, because the master deed from the condominium is what goes forward. So, I don't want to muck up title, is essentially what it is. Bishop, and I think, you know, we talked about this, it's just, it's, it's something that essentially clouds title in perpetuity.
So, my response to that is, is that, I, I don't think it clouds title, I think it clarifies title. And I, I mean, for those of us here that do real estate law, I mean, it's, it's frustrating when I look at a title for a project that's been permitted, and the condo docs, the plans that are attached to master deeds are notoriously, a lot of times, is poor, and they don't provide the details you're looking for. And if I'm sitting in my office in Cambridge, and I have to go to the Norfolk Registry of Deeds to pull, or, or the Town Hall to pull a plan, so I can understand something in the, in the chain of title, it, it's, it's very inconvenient. And, and so, I think it clarifies title, it's, it's standard practice. I'm not, and, and what I'm talking about here is recording the first set of plans, it's, it's the, if you look at Section A4, it's subsection A, it's those, it's those sheets, it's not the whole section. It's the, it's the site plans, so... And frankly, if, if you want it, if, if, if there's a concern about having too many plans on record, although I don't know why that's a concern, but if there was a concern, you could just limit it to the, to one of these detail sheets that show the location of the structures and the roads, but...
Again, that's, that's what the master deed does, and that's going to be in perpetuity so that when Attorney Hill goes looking to the registry 10 years from now, the master deed's on record, which is, you know, to solve that problem.
I don't understand, what, how is it clouding title to put a site plan on?
I'll tell you how, if I may. What you just described is, is, is good for someone to know what is supposed to happen. The next step would be, is, where it clouds it is, how does a title attorney say, okay, how do I know if this plan is, is reflected in reality or not? And if whatever is built is according to this plan or not? If it's not, it is a cloud on, on the title, if there's any deviations. How is, how is, how is the title attorney gonna know the size of the drainage pipe in the ground?
Well, what does recording the plan have to do with that?
Well, because, because...
There could be, that, that question could be open if that plan isn't recorded. If, if, if you're concerned that, gee, this, this building was built, you know, five feet from the property line, I, how do I know that, that was built in accordance with the plan? Now, I gotta go to Town Hall to look at it, versus I, I click the button, and I see it on my screen.
So, so that concern is addressed by putting one plan, which is the first sheet of, of, of the approved plan, on, on the record. But what I'm talking about is, is construction details, and, and cross-sections of pipes and roads, and that, that is something that's beyond any title, title company.
You're right. I mean, most, most times, all you really need is the one sheet, the site plan that has all the details. And, and I'd be fine with that, but I, I also don't see any problem putting on all the sheets, I don't think that's...
By the way, this was, just, just for, you know, it's being said that it's a standard practice, this was not done in, on Cleveland Street, nor on Boyd's, on, on Main Street. The plans were not recorded, but, I mean, you people decided.
We had different, we had different representations. For those other applications, they had different representations.
Yeah, but we're also... If you've got a client, if you've got a, if you're a lawyer, and you're, you've got a client who's looking to buy a condo, and a realtor's, and the real, and the PNS or the listing says, hey, you've got this beautiful yard with a wall on it that's adjacent to your building, and that's an amenity or something, you know, if I'm a lawyer, I'm gonna be like, all right, that was an important piece of this PNS, now I want to see if that was actually shown in the plan, you know, it's, I want to be able to see the plan, so I can reference what they're talking about. And, and as a lawyer, I, I'd like to be able to see it at the registry of deeds.
The only distinction I'm making is that this is a condominium. That's, that's the difference. And where it's a condominium, the only plans that go on are the master deed. And if, I think anything else is superfluous, and it confuses things, because at the end of the construction, you're going to have an as-built. You wouldn't record the as-built, the as-built is on record with the town. These are just not things that are recorded. I think this is a vestige of subdivision plans. A definitive subdivision plan gets recorded, that's normal. If this were a subdivision, we, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. The confusion is, this is a condominium. The plan that gets recorded is the master deed, and it has to be consistent with the decision. Like I said, that gets reviewed by Town Council as well. So, that's the distinction I'm making.
You've heard arguments of both sides.
Similar to, but similar to a subdivision, a subdivision will also have changes. So, no different from a condominium, you also have change in a subdivision, and you'd have the same exact situation. So, by recording a subdivision, you're saying, that's okay, because this is a condominium, it's not okay. Subdivisions are gonna have changes, well, just like our condominium properties are gonna have changes, too. So, what would be the problem?
Well, well, let me ask this question. So, if you go ahead and file a master deed with a, with a plan, okay, and then there's a change to the plan, what happens?
You'd have to, as soon as, and actually, to Mr. Weider's point, it's, it's a similar process, okay?
Okay.
Once the, either definitive subdivision plan is recorded, and a lot within the subdivision is sold, okay, or a master deed is recorded, and a condominium within the condominium is sold, you need to get the consent from the person to whom the property was sold, or to whom the condominium was sold, in order to amend the plan, all right? So, that's the, that's the issue, or that's one of the issues in a subdivision, is you have to then record the permission and a subsequent amendment to show of record. Now, we're talking about before construction, we want to, Dan's suggesting that with this permit, before construction, I have to put a plan on record, all right? Before construction, if that plan changes, I then have to record an amendment, and the entire history of that amendment to show why it's different. So, say we just record these plans with the decision, and something changes, then I have, then somebody's going to look at that, what if it, what if they didn't properly record the subsequent amendment, and they're saying, well, wait a second, this wasn't built according to this original plan? Whereas, if you just wait until the master deed gets recorded, I mean, if we wanted to, we could say that the master deed shall contain, the master deed can contain additional detail regarding the location of walls and, and stuff like that, so that you can see those attributes to the plan. But now we're recording two plans. You're recording, whereas in a subdivision, you're recording just the definitive subdivision plan, okay? Plan set. And then those are on record in perpetuity, and those are amended in perpetuity. What you're saying in this case is, record the approved plans out of the, out of the comprehensive permit, and then we're gonna record a master deed plan, and everyone's going to be looking at those in perpetuity. So, someone might look at the condominium, and then get confused, and look back at the plans that are recorded with the comprehensive permit, that's the distinction. This is a condominium, only the condominium plans get recorded.
Well, the other thing I'll say, too, is this, is that, so, if you're gonna give me a deed, if I'm examining a title, and you're gonna give me a deed for a home buyer, that deed is gonna reference a plan. It's gonna say in there, take a look at this plan, no matter what plan it is. It's gonna be the last plan recorded, whatever that may be. And so, from, with respect to the, a title issue, I typically, I'm, I'm not gonna have much of an issue with that, because, because I, I'm relying on you to tell me that that's the plan, that's, so, so in other words, I don't go up to a piece of property and measure it, and take photos, and I don't do that. I just look at the title. And, and so, and so, if, you know, it's, if you're telling me you're selling me one acre of land, and I look at a plan, and the plan coincides with the deed that you're sending me, which is one acre of land, I'm good.
And to that point, that deed is going to say, subject to a comprehensive permit, this deed is subject to a comprehensive permit, recorded at book X, page Y, all right? And once you get into that, there will be another plan there. So, now you have two plans. So, that's the difference here. In your scenario, you're looking at the deed that references a master deed. Problem solved, situation over. The condom, the comprehensive permit is only relevant to construction.
That's not true, Chris, you keep saying that. The comprehensive permit...
As soon as I said that, I knew you were...
No, but the comprehensive permit, this is very important, this is a very important point. Probably the most important condition in this decision, in the 20, 17 pages of this decision, the most important condition is that the developer shall construct the project in compliance with the plans. Because if he doesn't, then you're all, the last year that we've spent reviewing this project is all for naught, because you, you've been relying on their plan sets and iterations, and on Bill's review of those plans, to come to a point where you're comfortable with this project. If they build a project that doesn't comply with those plans, we're in trouble. So, that's why I feel it's important. I mean, I, I understand Chris's position, I get it, he doesn't want to have extra plans on record. I personally, if I'm looking at title, I don't have a problem looking at a master deed plan and a, and a site plan together. Frankly, if I see inconsistency, that's gonna be a red flag. I'd like to see that. I, I want to see more information, not less, but that, that's just me.
That's exactly the point. It's already built. When your red flag goes up, why have that red flag if it's built at that point? The town's already signed off on it. I think you understand the developer's position, I think we're gonna be, if we... I think we're going to be, if we put extra stuff on record, we're long after wear, dead and gone, you know, people will be stumbling through plans that I think are unnecessary where you're dealing with a condominium. I think it's appropriate for subdivision, not for a condominium. So, I leave it to the board. If Dan insists on recording a plan, I would suggest that it be one site plan. But I think even that is superfluous where the comprehensive permit is recorded and that is the requirement that the project be built according to the plans referenced in the comprehensive permit. And then, once it's built from there, the master deed takes over. And that's it, in perpetuity.
Are you comfortable with one site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. Everyone comfortable with that?
All right. On B eight nine, I wanted to flag something here that the, these conditions essentially require the applicant to produce some follow-up information on the stormwater system. But there wouldn't be any additional review of the overall stormwater system itself. The stormwater plans that have been provided by the applicant have been reviewed by Bill. And in 90% of the projects I work on, the stormwater plans that are submitted during the public hearing are not the final plans, they're basically preliminary plans. And that, in all my draft decisions, I always have a condition that as part of the final plan review by the zoning board, this is after the permit's been issued and when they're ready to start construction, they would submit a final set of stormwater designs for, which would typically include greater, you know, more detail than was provided before, would include more hydrology calculations and so forth. And then, that would be reviewed one last time by the peer review engineer. This decision does not have that condition because the applicant's position is that they've provided, they've already done all that. There's not going to be any additional stormwater design work. All of the design work has been reviewed and signed off on by Bill and therefore, there shouldn't be a need for that. I, as part of my due diligence, I want to make sure that Bill is in agreement with that level of assurance that we're getting, that Bill would not have any need to take a look at any final designs. What I see a lot in other towns is peer review engineers, for better or worse, relying on their peer who works for the developer to say, this is how I'm designing it, I'm telling you as an engineer, this will work. And a lot of times, the peer review engineer will look at that and hear that and say, okay, I see all this, I think it can work. I'm not going to then dive into the details and look at the hydro calculations and the pipe sizings and things like that. Maybe Bill's already done that, and if so, then there's no need for any further review, which is what the applicant's position is. So, I just want to double-check that with Bill between now and the next meeting.
Okay. Reasonable, agree.
Is that fair?
Yes, that's what we discussed, and I think Bill's discussion at the hearing was that he's reviewed everything, yep.
And then, on the water department issue, there was an issue...
Where are you? B fourteen?
B thirteen. C, no.
B fourteen, maybe?
In B thirteen, I had a section that said I wanted to make sure the water department had signed off on all the utility water connection.
B fourteen?
Oh, is it fourteen?
B fourteen C.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, B fourteen C. Oh, maybe, I guess, did you add that? Did you change that?
Yeah, I thought we discussed the language. As long as it's consistency, I mean, it has to be, it's just a review to determine consistency.
Just for your information, we paid the water department, where we see your group fee, and they gave us, they had their own water expert do the design, and we followed exactly what they did.
That was done outside of this zoning board process?
It was done, it was, yes, it was outside, but it was done by the recommendation of the board for me to go deal with them.
Okay.
That's when I contacted Mr. McGee and I gave him a check and he sent it to their own engineer and they, yes, it wasn't reviewed by McGrath.
Do we have something in the record, Amy, from the water department?
Is that the one that, the E P D?
Yes.
My only, my concern here was that the water department has looked at your proposed connections to the water main and is comfortable with metering, all the details of the water connections, and they had reviewed it. This language under B fourteen C is simply that the water department is reviewing it and it's consistent with approved plans, but I want to make sure that the approved plans were actually reviewed by the water department and that they're fine with those. So, you're saying that you think they are?
Saying they are. I'm saying, actually, yes. But whatever you want to do to comfort yourself, feel free to do it.
So, I'll put that on my follow-up list to look at that memo, and if necessary, well, I'll follow up. Is it Bob McGee?
Bob McGee.
Do you want me to email you this?
Yeah, I think I have it, but if you want to email it, please.
I was out at a response later, I brought it up.
That's all I had with B. So, jumping to C.
Can't rent them, man. You can't rent them. Can't rent a...
I don't think there are any issues in C that we flagged for the board's attention, so... Section D?
D two.
D deals with the affordability requirements of the project and profit cap. D two says that the sale prices shall be basically the prices that are set by the subsidizing agency and inconsistent with the D H C guidelines. The Department of Housing and Community Development is D H C. And they are the regulatory authority under 40B. They publish regulations and guidelines on all aspects of 40B, including the affordable units, how they should be marketed, how they should be priced. And there was some disagreement between Chris and I at our meeting about how affordable units are priced in 40B projects. It's my understanding that the rules require the pricing to be at what's affordable to somebody making 70% of median income. Chris's understanding is that it's at 80%. The bottom line is, it doesn't matter what Chris and I think, it's what the rule is. And so, we basically said on D two, you follow the rule, whatever D H C says is the rule. And frankly, this board has no authority to change that. Unfortunately, that's not...
So, you're going to find out what the exact, you're going to find out what the correct number is?
Well, we don't, we don't need to because whatever that number is, they have to follow it.
It's whatever the state says. And the answer's somewhere between what Dan described and what I described.
Seventy-five.
It's a window of affordability.
Okay.
I don't know why we highlighted it.
I changed the language a little bit just to make it clear that it was a reference to the guidelines. So, I wanted to point that out. I think there's a bit of philosophical difference because a lot of these conditions in D are within the exclusive purview of the subsidizing agency. So, to some degree, Dan is protecting the town by repeating them in the permit. But I, there's nothing in here that's inconsistent with the requirements of the subsidizing agency. So, I'm fine with reciting them in the permit.
Just so you guys are aware of what we've drafted for the local preference criteria, and that's the D four. I don't know if we talked about this already. You have some leeway to define what local preference means. Under 40B, a zoning board or a town has the ability to say, you know, up to 70% of these affordable units can be set aside or reserved for local people. And what does local mean? Well, the way I drafted it is local means somebody who lives here already, but it also means somebody who works here. So, if you have somebody, a firefighter or a teacher, somebody who works here but maybe lives in Franklin or Rentham, but wants to live here, they would be eligible for that local preference pool. So, as you can see here, there's four criteria. I'm pretty comfortable that these will all be approved by the state. If they aren't, then they can be stricken. So, I'm just highlighting that for your information, in case you had any concerns with the criteria. D six is the phasing of the affordable units, and there was some difference between Chris and I on this point. The standard language that I use in my decisions is that a developer can build three market-rate units, but then, the fourth has to be an affordable. And the developer has to stick to that ratio for the whole build-out of the project. The reason we have phasing is so a developer doesn't go in and build all the market-rate units first and then abandons the project and walks away from it. Believe it or not, that's happened, and so, because of that, you know, we've put the conditions in. Probably half of these conditions that I put in are because of some experience. I mean, that's what lawyers do. You know, most of what we do is, all right, something happened bad 10 years ago, and so, here's how we fixed it.
Why all the documents keep getting longer? I hate to see what they look like 10 years from now.
Ten more years from now.
Right, 10 years, 10 years ago, they were only two pages. So, anyway, so, my language is three to one. Now, Chris, one is in flexibility and that, so you could build four market rates, is that right?
Your language might work. If we're talking in a subdivision where you have three lots and then you can build one over there. In this case, we really cannot build but in order because the houses are so close to each other. I cannot build three houses here and go jump, do one affordable here and then go fill in the gaps. We have to go in order because they're so close together, we can't fit a machine in between two houses. And this is what we've done everywhere, anywhere. So, really, the only way I can build houses is in order. I cannot jump around here and there. I simply can't.
Basically, what you're saying is you're okay with his condition?
No. I'm not. No, because the order of affordable units may not follow three per one.
Oh, okay, right.
They may not go three, one, three, one, three, one. They may go three affordables or, you know, two affordables and then three regulars.
So, I guess, to answer that, I think I would feel comfortable if I knew exactly, if you gave me a site plan with all the buildings and all the units and you said, and you designated which ones are the affordables and which ones are market. And then, you told us the order in which you're going to build these. If you actually had that detail, then I think I could be comfortable with that.
So, there are two issues at play here. And I think we end up at the same place. The first issue is, this is one of those conditions that is within that programmatic requirements that the subsidizing agency has jurisdiction over. So, the subsidizing agency, mass housing, the state, under the guidelines, monitors to ensure that the developer builds the affordable units. And the language that I put in actually mirrors the language that's in the regulatory agreement that will get recorded. And the regulatory agreement says that the units shall be built substantially three market rate for every one affordable. And all that does is provide a little bit of flexibility in case of what Bishop describes. Ultimately, this issue is governed by the regulatory agreement. I think Dan's language is so hard and fast that it could lead to problems where Bishop was describing, it just doesn't work to build that fourth unit as an affordable unit. You might have to build one more market-rate unit before the next one is affordable. So, all this says is substantially three to one, and provided that under no circumstances may more than four certificates of occupancy be issued for market-rate units until at least one C O is issued for an affordable unit. So, that's the, that's the backstop, all right? But again, ultimately, this is mass housing. So, if there were a dispute, mass housing would step in and...
So, Chris, let me interview you. This is not something that I feel that strongly about. His language is okay, I think mine's better, but if the board's comfortable with his language, you know, I'm okay with it personally.
I'm comfortable with Dan's assessment. We've got a track record with Bishop. He's worked very closely with Sue Jacobson, and I'm comfortable.
And the language that's here highlighted is the language we will have.
Yes. Yeah, so, it's substantially for the construction of one to three, substantially. So, that gives him the flexibility to go up.
All right.
So, keep that. Section E.
Will there be blasting, Charles?
I don't know, we'll find out now.
So, section, yeah, section E eight. I have a standard, I have a stock, you know, section or condition that deals with blasting that goes in a lot more detail in terms of, if the applicant needs to blast, here are the steps they have to follow, here are the requirements. And the reason I put that language in there, again, it comes back to some project I probably worked on eight, 10 years ago that went awry. And I know that the state blasting regulations are not, they're just not that detailed. And so, basically, it gives the fire chief a tremendous amount of authority to basically say, either you're doing this right or you're doing that wrong, and to impose whatever requirements the chief feels is appropriate. So, if you're not concerned about blasting on the site and impacts on potential down, downgraded impacts on the butters that you feel comfortable relying on the fire chief and this applicant to do this the right way, then his language is fine. That's just the difference.
So, there's no plan to do any blasting?
I mean, there's always room for surprises, but we've dug every place in that site. We've never run into ledge. We have not run into ledge. We have like, maybe, three weeks' worth of excavation that we've done, different observation wells and perk tests, and we have not seen, not in one test hole, we have not run into ledge. So, I think it's a really moot point at this point.
The only I've seen missing is that, I know that when we had other projects in town and there's been blasting, again, this project may have no blasting, but usually, the butters, if there's any blasting planned, sometimes they do some inspections ahead of time. Right, and obviously, I don't see that here.
Yeah, and that's in my language. So, there's a requirement for a pre-blast survey. So, the applicant would be responsible to hire a company that would then go to each home, knock on the door and say, hey, can I videotape your foundation?
Right, right.
So, it kind of lays out that protocol. But the fire chief could impose that as well. So, and if ledge is not an issue, then maybe it's not necessary to have this kind of...
And maybe our fire chief always does impose that. I don't know that answer at the moment, right?
If it's not an issue, why not just put the more details and protect the town and me as a tax-paying butter? And it's not a big deal, right? It's not going to impact Fisher's finances because he doesn't have to blast. So, more conservative is better, in my opinion, as I know butters.
So, that's for the board to decide if you want to be over-inclusive or...
I was just going to make that point, I'm just going to make that point about, you know, if it's, would the applicant have any objection to leaving this in if they feel confident that there's no blasting required?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question was, if you perceive that there's no blasting required, would you have any objection to us keeping this language in here?
I do not have any objection, but I think it's totally unnecessary because even the pre-blasting survey that Attorney Hill is talking about, it's a standard procedure, you don't need to require it before any blasting is done, which we're doing in Cleveland Street, and there is no such language on Cleveland Street.
What's requiring you to do it? Is our fire chief requiring you to do this?
No, no, it's part of, it's part of the standard procedure because in order to blast, you need to have insurance. To have insurance, you need to do this pre-blasting survey. So, it's really standard procedure to do all of that. You cannot blast without showing your certificate of insurance. You cannot have a certificate of insurance.
Without the survey.
Without the survey and filing all the licenses with, and those licenses are extensive and very...
So, if I'm hearing correctly...
If you look at my decision, the one that says Hill decision on the front...
Right, I have it.
And it's condition D thirteen, that's the more extensive condition that we're referring to. And, you know, some of the additional requirements is insurance. So, you know, my condition says you have to carry a million dollars in property damage insurance, well, a million dollars per incident, 2,000, 2 million in the aggregate. So, it's that kind of stuff that may get missed through the cracks, no pun intended, where...
Yeah, why don't we leave it in?
Yeah.
You're not going to do any blasting, let's just leave it in.
This is the default, just leave it in.
And it sounds like this is what you'd have to do if, okay. I appreciate the protection applied, thank you. I appreciate the protection applied, thank you. All right, and then E9. So the language that's in highlight is actually, I think, my language. And Chris, do you want to raise a question or a comment?
I think it was related to your follow-up with Beta to ensure that there wasn't anything else they were looking for, which is our understanding. So the second half you explained to me was intended to prevent the roadway from being accepted as a public way, which we're fine with. I think the only sentence is the one that I had put in italics, and that's a function of whether or not Beta is actually looking for anything else. Because our, as we sit here today, our position is that the plans describe in detail, in a readily readable format, all proposed roadway and construction grading and apartment work.
If that's the case, then why would you have a problem with the Senate?
Because having the requirement in there, and I think I described to you my reading in it, having the requirement in there presumes that we don't already have it. So that was the disconnect. If you say, "All final plans shall have sufficient detail," someone coming along reading this must presume that the approved plans don't have the detail.
So why don't we just say, "All final plans shall continue to have that kind of detail."
Mr. Chairman?
I think that's a good compromise.
Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else on section E, we move to section F, which is public safety and fire protection. So you highlighted, Chris, the fire access with the 15 feet between all structures?
I do have a problem with that because sometimes, you know, the gutters may stick out a few inches. Right now, the foundations are 15 feet apart, and actually, we pinned the hole in order to make sure we don't miss that. But sometimes you have like a farmer's porch with a rake, and then a gutter that will stick beyond the 15. There is a fire requirement that's observed very strictly by the fire chief and the building inspector. And if we violate this 15 feet, we have, there is room to violate it in the code, but now if we violate this 15 feet by six inches, now we're violating violation of this whole decision. I don't see any need for that. The code is 10 feet apart for fire protection. So if we're going to quote, I would say leave it for the fire chief to worry about fire access because he's very vigilant about that. But if you insist on doing, on being more specific, let's make it 10 feet, which is the code.
We could follow, we could check with the fire chief on this, between now and the next meeting. Let's do that.
Agreed.
Where did this 15 feet come from? Did, was it yours, Dan?
I assume it was my standard language, I don't know.
Okay.
All right, and then we have the hydrant issue.
Yeah, we actually went back and checked, and the hydrants are shown on the utility plan. So they've already been identified, put on the plan, reviewed, approved, so we can actually strike this. Or you can say hydrants shall be located as shown on the plan. If we have to change it, notify the chief, and that would be it.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Okay, F7. I don't, do we need to talk about F7, Chris?
All right. This is all under that one umbrella as far as how we're sequencing construction.
So we're going to get to that.
So if you want to explain...
Well, that's the next section.
Well, actually, let's talk about the sidewalk quickly. Obviously, we understand there needs to be a condition that compels the developer to build the sidewalk. The question is the timing. And generally, we had envisioned having that completed later on in the development.
What's the purpose in having to complete the sidewalk before the first occupancy is granted? As long as it's done, and...
Well, the purpose is so that the residents can use it.
The very first occupant is going to be, I would propose, you know, maybe before the half, the second, you know, at the halfway point that this is finished, the sidewalk.
Could you paragraph that?
You want F9?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can we live with the shell design construct?
The way it's drafted is it's the first occupancy permit, Bishop's looking for more flexibility to have the sidewalk built halfway through the project.
Comfortable with that?
So after 16?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I know you want to jump in, but we can't allow that at this point. What ordinarily happens in a subdivision or condominium complex, like this, where there are going to be roads and sidewalks and so forth, what is the sequence of events?
So, yeah, this is more of a linkage condition. It's not something that's onsite. It's something that the developer was compelled to offer the town as linkage to mitigate the impacts of the project. So this is like an extra for the development. Dan's going to describe the requirements for everything on the project site and how those are going to get done. We'll discuss that in a second. But for something that's a bonus condition, Bishop was looking for some flexibility in terms of the timing to get this done.
So is this pertaining to this bonus stuff that you're referring to? Is that what this is?
This sidewalk on Rockwood Road...
It's off-site.
Yes, it's off-site, right, right.
Is there any reason why it couldn't be done before the first occupancy?
There might be because depending on when the construction happens, it might be in the middle of winter when we need the occupancy on the first house. It might be inconvenient for the, actually, the DPW to give us a permission to go on to do the sidewalk. It is my philosophy, anything that needs to be done, we do it right away, but there are certain barriers to do it that sometimes are insurmountable. So I'd like just the flexibility to do it when it's possible to be done.
I think we'd like to see it done as soon as possible, given the constraints that you have. How do we word that? Before occupancy, prior to the first occupancy, I mean...
Does this sidewalk become...
There are DPW considerations here.
Goes from the property up to the...
How do we word it?
You could put a seasonal issue there. I mean, if it's in the winter, you do it in the spring.
That's one thing about the seasonal issue.
But otherwise, it would be first, it would be prior to the first occupancy permit, provided that if the first occupancy permit is issued between the months of October and March, then you could do it in April or March.
Does this sidewalk, is this town property?
Yes.
Is there any, just, are there any liability issues associated with unfinished town sidewalk? You know, so construction's going on, things are happening, people are walking around, and there's a dirt sidewalk with rocks. I don't know, is there any, I'm just wondering if there's any type of...
Well, there is no sidewalk there. They'd be doing it...
Oh, there's nothing there?
He would just start it and finish it right away.
Got it, okay, okay. Well, seasonal flexibility...
I think Dan can craft some language that accomplishes the goal there. Seasonal, you know, and add the concept of if the DPW delays it, that's not going to hold it up. Anything outside of Bishop's control, I'd imagine. Because if he's ready to sell a unit and we're waiting on an occupancy permit, and for whatever reason the DPW is holding it up, you know, I think that's what he's trying to avoid.
Is that something you can craft up?
I mean, it just seems to me, though, that if you're concerned about that, why not start the sidewalk well before you're going to be asking for that occupancy permit? I mean, if I were you, I'd be doing that when I built the road.
I think we'd like to see it done because you've also got a lot of people who are going to be, remember, you do have train commuter traffic, you're going to have construction vehicles. People are going to be trying to cross over in that area. I think it makes sense to have it there to avoid any issues. I think it's really just plain simple. It goes way back to when we were talking about the path, people walking down the line. I think it just will make it a lot easier. It's safer for everybody.
I mean, just that, it's needed today already, so that's kind of what the real gist is.
Okay.
So you want to just leave it as is?
No, I mean, if, just add the seasonal component.
The seasonal component.
Do you want the seasonal...
Yeah. Does seasonal make sense?
Makes sense if you can't just...
Can't do it in the winter, right?
Yes, but you can't, I think, as Dan pointed out, you get it done right up front. So you don't, you don't use the seasonal as an excuse. You get it done right up front.
What if they're standing in...
Before they get an occupancy permit. They can get it done.
Okay.
If you can pour a driveway, if you can put a driveway payment down, you can pour a sidewalk, plain simple.
If you can't pour a driveway, you won't.
Right, so you're not going to have an occupancy permit, right? If you're not...
That actually is the next, that's the next discussion.
Right.
Why don't we table this, talk about the driveway, then go back to it? All right, G1. Actually, do you want to explain this, Chris?
So on Boyd's Crossing, the board granted, I think, some leeway to Bishop in terms of installing foundations and constructing wood frame buildings prior to installation of the roadway for the development. Normally, what happens in a subdivision is that you're not allowed to pull a building permit until the base course of the roadway serving that lot is constructed to provide access to the building. What Bishop had proposed, because of the unique situation of Boyd's Crossing, which also applies to some degree to this proposal, is that in order to create that village feel, he was going to build everything at once. He was going to build, how many units did you end up doing right up, 15 units out of the gate? So what Bishop agreed to do was, we'll build 15 units out of the gate, but we won't be able to get to the 16th unit until the entire roadway was developed. The entire roadway was installed. So even though the roadway was not installed, Bishop was pouring foundations and building wood frame construction before there was a roadway serving that building, which is the normal subdivision-style sequencing of construction. I had drafted into this permit the same sequencing arrangement that the board granted Bishop to offer Bishop some flexibility on Boyd's Crossing for this development as well, again, to create that village feel. I don't know what Bishop's intent is relative to the number of units that he's intending to build out of the gate, but it is nice to kind of incentivize the developer to have everything up and running so that it's all there at once, which, there's some flexibility there. The alternative is to do what's more traditional, which is simply that before any building permit is issued, the roadway and the infrastructure serving that building needs to be in place so you can have access to it. So that's the concept, and I think, you know, Dan can elaborate from there, Bishop wants to mention.
Another factor you should be considering, taking into account while you're considering, pondering this decision, is that a lot of the drainage system for that site is in the roadways. So if we, if we do the construction after the road is paved, the actual excavation and some silt will, will be, will go into the drainage system that would have been better off had, doing the actual excavation and pouring foundations prior to paving. And so we have the opportunity to clean it up and, you know, there'd be less silt and dirt running into it. So that also is a factor that, I think, was, played a role in your decision on Boyd's Crossing.
Is there anything negative about not doing this?
Are you agreeing, Dan, with what's in the highlights now?
Yeah, I actually don't, I haven't seen this kind of language before, but I don't necessarily have a problem with it because in F7, you've agreed to build a driveway with a basin binder coat.
Right, sorry, I think I didn't highlight that, but it's all under the same concept. That's the concept.
But my point there is that the town's protected in that there is going to be a basin binder driveway constructed that will provide the access to the buildings. This really is an emergency access issue. It's more of a fire safety thing, an ambulance, so that in the middle of their construction, if some guy falls off the roof, that ambulance can get out there and pull him out. So if there's a basin binder driveway in place, I think that addresses the concern. The surety provision is more that, the concern with that is developer starts constructing something, he builds all these houses and starts selling them off without finishing the infrastructure, and then he walks away. He either goes belly up, or he takes off to Florida, plays golf.
We've had experience where the roadways weren't finished.
Yeah, a lot of towns have. So that's why, that's why we're constantly refining the surety language to prevent those kind of things from happening. So G1 actually is, that actually just goes to building permits, and so I'm not as concerned about G1. I think the way this is drafted is probably fine. You know, my bigger concern is what happens after the building permits are issued and before occupancy permits are issued, because that's when houses are being sold. And your main concern should be, you don't want to let any developer, and like everything else in this decision, we're not picking on one person. This is, this is a precedent-setting decision. We've got other 40Bs. We don't want any developer to start selling off units without finishing the infrastructure that goes to those units. So that's my biggest concern.
We've been through a situation where we didn't get the roads finished.
Now, when, on this project, we, I think you were involved in this, we secured a bond...
For Boyd's?
Yes, okay. So is this, is that what that surety is?
Well, this bond is actually for building permits. Again, I, when we skip ahead to G2B, now we're talking about, he can't get more than half of the occupancy permits until he finishes all of the infrastructure. Or he posts a bond, I believe, or, I'm sorry, G3 deals with a tri-party agreement. And that's, that's a different kind of protection. It's not a bond, but basically, a bank is saying, you know, I'm going to set aside X number of dollars of the developer's money, and if this hasn't been completed, then the town can access that money to complete the job itself. With a condo project that, where the driveways and infrastructure remain private, the best practice for a town is not ever having to have to exercise a bond, because the town doesn't want to send its DPW or contractors onto a private site where the roads aren't even public ways. But, you know, with 40B, the rules are a little bit different. Most towns allow developers to provide surety rather than, you know, strict compliance with finishing all the infrastructure by half the project. So I'm okay with this language.
Comfortable with this construction, with this?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right, good. So G, we're good to go?
Yeah, G4 we highlighted because that's something, I think that was actually my, one of my conditions that you guys haven't seen before.
But the only problem is we're now in G1A is we still have the sidewalk, which is the last line.
You mean F9?
Were you talking?
F9.
No, well, we have, no, we have, if you look at G1A, it talks to the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's...
That's why he wanted, that's why Chris wanted to go to that and then go back, because clearly says he's not going to do the sidewalk.
Right, that was, the language there was to incentivize completion of the sidewalk prior to the second half of the development, so prior to the 16th unit.
But again, this is building permits, and they have an out by providing surety under subsection B, so...
Reb, he's tying the sidewalk in, the one that's on Rockwood Road?
Yeah.
We go back to, do we own it before the first occupancy?
Yeah, G1 is building permits.
Right.
That's why this is a little weird. I never actually had building permits as part of a surety provision, but anyway, it's, you know, let's go back to the sidewalk. Do you guys want the sidewalk built up front?
As soon as possible.
Yeah, I mean, my advice would be that should be built when he's building a road. I agree with that. I think it's, I think the applicant can predict how long it's going to take for DPW to approve it, how long it's going to take to build, it can work around the weather... It can work around the, the weather and the season. It's, it's not a huge cost item, so I, I think that's something that.
Okay, do I have the option to post a bond with, with, with the board, with the town for the sidewalk? Do I, is that an option that's afforded to me?
Well, I think the issue that the board was expressing is that they want the sidewalk built, not that it has to exercise a bond. So I think, I think they want the sidewalk built so that people who move into the project can start using it. Am I right?
Is, is your issue one of logistics?
It's just the unknown. It really is, I think, just the unknown, because invariably, I've, I've had situations where a developer is saying, I'm ready to sell a unit, and a CO is being held up by XYZ. The completion of the sidewalk is Z. The board is saying, just build the sidewalk, Bisher. But where we can't predict the future, Bisher is asking for some flexibility in the event some unknown comes up, and he's suggesting as another alternative, if that unknown comes up, with the, with, to ensure that the sidewalk gets built, would it be adequate provision to post a bond as, as another alternative? We're not going to give him seasonal flexibility. If we're not going to give him other flexibility to do it later on in the project, can we at least give him flexibility to say if unknown circumstances come up and he's ready to sell a unit and he's waiting on a CO, can he post a bond to ensure that the town has the money to at least build the sidewalk? And he gets his CO.
And my response to that is, is the issue is not, is Bisher ever going to build it? The, the, I think the concern that the board has is it wants the sidewalk built at a certain period of time, and it, the board isn't going to want to have to exercise a bond.
This is a busy area. Train tracks, people coming and going. Let's just get the sidewalk in, be done with it. Thank you.
I'm going to go out with a shovel right after this hearing gets started.
Did you have any idea at this point?
We'll mix the cement for you, Chris.
I mean, you can't foresee the future, but have engineers looked at it and said, oh, here's what it, what it's going to take to put a sidewalk in?
Well, it's already designed.
Oh, so, so then.
Designed and approved and everything.
So then you.
You have no issues with it.
Okay.
Because there, there are unforeseen circumstances that could occur, such as, you know, the town.
The town may propose to, to have, which was proposed before. I know, I know the board didn't want to hear that, but circumstances may change so that the, the, the DPW may do it and have me do something else in place of it. You know, just give me a little bit of maneuvering room, but no problem, we'll do it.
Okay. Who, who actually builds it? Do you build it or does it?
I do.
You actually build it?
I will.
Okay.
It's going to be the best sidewalk in town.
And you've had plenty of experience with Bob McGee, that they'll work with you too. Yeah, they're very reasonable. If there are extenuating circumstances, the, the town will work closely with you, so.
I hope you are as friendly to Andrew Allen the developer as you are to me.
The walk of fame, Chris. We'll get a staff for you with that thing, huh?
All right, G4, we, I think we highlighted that mostly because I, it's probably a condition you haven't seen before. This has come up again because of projects in other towns where a developer will clear cut a site and then walk away, not even building it. In fact, I think, didn't you have that problem in Town Center here? Wasn't there basically a moonscape for years?
For years, yeah.
You know, every town has the project that, like the hole, the Filene's basement hole and downtown crossing. A lot of times, things get cleared and then stall out. G4 requires the posting of a bond or a tri-party agreement with, with the construction lender just for the minimal costs that would be entailed if an applicant clears the entire site and then walks away, that we, we have something that we can go in and stabilize the site, which I think is particularly important when you've got really close abutters and, and this, this, this bond would be exercisable to restore the site. So it's, you know, we're not going to create a new forest, but at least it would put it back into some semblance of order. And I don't know, did you have an objection to that or?
You know, clearing the site, what would it involve to, to restore it? What would you do to restore the, clearing the site?
Well, that's up to our peer review engineer to define that.
Okay, I'd like to know what, what we're talking about. I mean, if you're, I'm not going to be posting a bond before I restore, before I just go and clear the, a site. I mean, unless, unless we specify a value and I know what that value is.
Yeah, this is a major issue because this is before Bisher even gets out of the gate. And I frankly haven't seen something like this before as far as just getting to the point where we start cutting down trees.
Yeah. I'll be the first to admit, this is not a condition that appears probably in most 40B permits. It, it came about because of an experience in the town of Grafton where a developer clear cut a site, walked away, there were no erosion control provisions, and the site was left fallow for years and resulted in flooding of a street that ended up, I mean, it cost the town a lot of money to have to deal with cleaning out the catch basins and dealing with, with the runoff and the drainage. And, and the, and the town didn't have any ability to go onto the, the site and fix it because it's private property. And so what the town had to do was sue in court, the owner, chase him down in Florida to get recourse, and that cost the town legal fees. So the point of this is, is to give the, a town some protection so, so this kind of thing doesn't happen. You know, it's probably never going to happen. I mean, you have a good track record in town.
Have you ever had a developer agree to this?
I'm sorry?
Have you ever had a developer agree to this?
Yeah, the last two projects in Grafton, we've, we've put this in. We're talking like 20,000. This, this is not a big cost item.
Bisher's question was, what is the number?
Yeah, why don't we talk to Bill? I mean, I, I can talk to Bill between now and then and plug a number in. This isn't, this is like tens of thousands. This isn't like $100,000 bond. This is to.
Again, just to restore the site, and you think about it, you've got a housing authority on one side, you have residential neighbors all around the site. It's not like Cleveland Street where you have only one abutter on one side and you have a, a pond on the other side. It's, it's similar to 106, 108, where you had the town on land on one side and only one resident on the other side. This side, you have residents on all sides. So I think it's, it is a good security measure for the town because you do have abutters all around you, and one of them happens to be an old age or assisted living facility. And again, it's to stabilize the site, which means erosion control, maybe something at the street level. It's not to put it back to where it was. I think it makes good sense.
I, I don't think it's going to be a large number.
Well, can we specify then?
Yeah.
He'll check that.
I'll get the number and plug it anywhere next up.
Yeah, well, and we'll agree to what that number is.
There will be a release time too, you know. It will be this much and will be released by this date.
Okay.
Or this event.
Would you ask Bill about that, because I think that's a good point? Is when does it get released?
Yeah. All right. H4. Yeah, H4 is a standard condition that snow can't be stored on top of drainage systems and leaching areas. And I think I put in language that, that there needs to be signage so that snowplow contractors know where not to store, where, where the snow should not be stored. I guess you don't want signs all over the.
Right, our, our concern was aesthetics, you know, additional signage. I had suggested to Dan that this condition could be identified in the condo documents that any snowplow contract servicing the condo shall direct the snowplow contractor not to dump in certain areas. I understand the concern. By law, under Title V, you're not allowed to stockpile snow on top of septic systems, so it would be something that, you know, ultimately, if there was really a problem with it, the Board of Health might point it out. It's just, you know, we don't want signage. In the summer, it just looks kind of weird. No snow piles over here. It's, it's something that I think we can accomplish with less obtrusive means.
I'll agree with Chris on this one.
My night.
Big Brother watches us too often. I think we can.
Yeah, I think we can live with.
We can live without it.
We can live without it.
See, Chris, we'll give you a few here and there.
All right, that, I think that really covers it. We, we've already gone through the waivers. I'm going to clean up the waiver section a little bit. I see Chris has already done, he's already started that. And we, I think between, you know, Chris and I will continue to refine this draft, and we'll come back to you at the next meeting with conversion. But I think at this point, all the major decisions have been made, and so now it's a sports method.
And he'll be in touch with Beta to clarify the couple items that are on that. You will?
Yeah. And the fire chief.
And the fire chief too.
Okay, so proceed jurorly. Are we going to vote first or close the public hearing first? Close the hearing, okay.
Do you want to have any public comments before you close the public hearing?
No, no. Do we have to, we, we've closed off taking testimony, so we.
We haven't, I don't think we've got public.
You have a closing, you want to take an initial.
All right. Any, before we close the public hearing, any final comments?
Nope. All right, thank you for, I do want to thank Bisher for really giving that level of detail. I think that this project is in a better place than it was at the beginning of this, and I do think that the residents that came and participated helped the project along, so I encourage others. And I appreciate Attorney Hill's thinking about the town for not just this project, but we are facing several 40Bs, and we need to make sure that we're protected in that way. So I appreciate being able to participate.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the Village at Norfolk LLC at 8:15, 8:45, 8:50 PM on November, what is it?
Night.
Yep. With the comprehensive permit filed under MGL Chapter 40B and the regulations promulgated therefore, construction of 32 condominium homes, single-family detached units on approximately 6.53 acres of land. The applicant proposes that 25% of the homes will be affordable. Property is located at 25 Rockwood Row within the R1 District, assessors map 14, block 49, lot 11.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we will, motion to accept.
With conditions or?
With conditions. How do we, how do you want to word this, Dan?
I, I think you could make a simple motion to approve the comprehensive permit application and the project as proposed in the most recent set of plans, subject to conditions that the board will memorialize in writing in the form of a written decision to come within the next 40 days.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
Get that?
Consistent with these deliberations? And, and Dan, actually, I'm sorry to interject, just to confirm voting eligibility, we have four members here tonight, which is fine. I believe there may have been one or two members that missed one hearing, and they've already executed affidavits indicating that they've caught up on the information relevant to that hearing and that they've refamiliarized themselves with that information under the Mullen Rule, so everyone's eligible to vote this evening.
And we need three yeses.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Make a motion to grant comprehensive permit for the Village at Norfolk LLC for a comprehensive permit filed under MGL Chapter 40 for 32 single-family units on approximately 6.53 acres of land, 25%, which will be affordable. Property is located at 25 Rockwood Row within the R1 District, assessors map 14, block 49, lot 11. This, this granting is subject to conditions, which will be prepared within the next 40 days, consistent with the deliberations and the approves, and the approved plans by the ZBA.
Okay, your response will either be yes to grant or no to grant.
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant.
Go ahead and practice.
Yes to grant.
Okay, good. Okay, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank the board for their efforts on this one. I know it's, it's never an easy process, and as was indicated, you know, by the abutters, I, I think we definitely saw the evolution of the plan during this time, and we got to a point where, you know, hopefully, it turns out to be a great project for everybody involved.
Thank you. Before you leave, a date, just cross Ts and dot Is. What, what do we have available, Amy, for?
For whole board meeting?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, we have a meeting on the.
No, you don't want that one. You want December 6th at the earliest.
December 6th?
Yeah. And you already have one that day, I think. On December 6th or you want to go to the 20th?
Is that a date which will live in there for me?
Hmm?
It was the 7th, 7th.
7th.
7th, sorry.
That's the draft agenda, of course.
For the 6th?
Yes, we've got 15 side drives, 16, 18 side drives, and 14 foot appeal.
Can we get it done that night?
What do you think you need, Dan? Probably, we don't need much time, do we?
The 6th is a bit of a time.
No, we don't, we don't need much time for a hearing. We're just going to review these. What do you think? I mean, I don't want to bring them in at 1:44. We could be here an hour. So that would put us at 8:30.
Yeah, I'm not expecting there to be a lot of discussion on the next draft.
Right.
So 15 or 20 minutes.
Okay.
Next one should be only have 43.
I don't think, do you have enough? Right, do you have enough time for next Wednesday?
Next, the 15th?
Yes.
When's Abbeyville? Are we doing the 15th or are we?
No, it's been postponed to the 21st, possibly, or 22nd.
Okay, so.
Next Wednesday, we have one. We just have a, an appeal hearing.
What's today's date and?
Night. Night.
I mean, I'd rather have more than.
Yeah, he's got to talk to Beta, he's got to talk to.
Four or five days, yeah.
Amy, what's, you have a 7 o'clock and then you have a 7:10?
Yep.
And then you have a 7?
15.
And you've published this one already?
Um, 7:15 was a continuation, and the other two have not been published.
All right, can we squeeze Bisher in?
And we'll put, yeah, we'll put Bisher at 7 and move everybody else down a little bit.
Okay, but we still have everybody before 7:15?
Hmm? No, we'll move the other two af-.
7:05.
We'll move, we'll move the other two, we'll move the 7 o'clock and the 7:10 till after we do 1:44. So we'll put them at the end of the meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
That way we get you in and out of here too early.
Great.
Get them out of here early.
Yeah. All right.
Get everyone done. Hey, did you ever see the deed for the friends? Okay.
Do you want to take a five minute recess?
Yes, why don't we take a five minute recess, and we'll begin the public hearing for Berlin Land.
Thumbs up.
All right, good evening. We're back from our brief recess, and our next public hearing is 60 River Road. It's a variance request. Chris, if you can open the public hearing, please?
Mr. Chairman, notice is hereby given according to Chapter 48 of Massachusetts General Law and all amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held at the Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting Room 124 on Thursday, November 9th at 9:05 PM for Berlin Land Realty Trust trustee Scott Goddard for a variance pursuit to MGL Chapter 40, Section 10 and Section D5, D2 of the Norfolk zoning bylaws to allow for the removal of an existing non-compliant single-family home located within the Flood Plain District and construction of a new home on this site. Property is located at 60 River Road, assessors map 4, block 27, lot 8, in the R2 zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Weider. Who's representing the applicant tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Matthew Watzke here as counsel for the applicant. With me is Scott Goddard, the trustee.
Okay, thank you, welcome. And I assume you're doing the presentation?
I will do the presentation, but where, where, where it is needed, Mr. Goddard can step in.
Okay.
Fill in whatever blanks there may be.
Okay.
I'll just go ahead and proceed. I assume that the, the members of the board have the, have the plans in the application that was filed.
We do.
That, I'll give a very brief background. You have an existing. You have an existing house, I think it was built in nineteen fifty-two, where the entire house, living area, is within and below the, the now designated Flood Plain District, the Hundred Year Flood Plain. First floor elevation is, is on slab-on grade at around elevation one fifty-two, I think it is. Around one thirty-two. The floodplain elevation is one thirty-six point seven, so about five feet higher. What's proposed is to actually remove the entire house and build a new house that has all of the living area elevated above the floodplain. Although, under your Section D point five point C, it would be permissible for us to apply for an expansion of the house by twenty-five percent along with complying with, with the flood elevations for that added twenty-five percent. That would leave a hundred percent of what's there now with the living area below the floodplain. So you've got your existing non-compliant cesspool, you have, you have all of your fixtures, all of the living space within and below the floodplain. Under D point five point D point two of the Flood Plain Overlay District, is the, that's the only provision where an exception can be made to the, to the general standards and be able to comply with the Flood Plain District. But that's only applicable if you can show that the area is not flooded. So you can say you're within the Flood Plain mapping, but you don't actually have flooding on the property. We believe, in fact, obviously, there is flooding on this property and you have a unique situation where you have the existing house and really everything within this lot is within the floodplain. So, we looked at this and we concluded, it, it makes much more sense rather than apply for the twenty-five percent special permit, leaving everything that's there now under the floodplain, to instead ask for a variance from, from the Flood Plain District requirements, which on their face prohibit new construction and by proposing new construction, build a house where all of the living space is elevated above the floodplain. So that makes the house much more livable, much safer. It's consistent with the intent of the Flood Plain District and the design that you have in front of you, in addition to having all of the floodplain, excuse me, all of the living space elevated above the Flood Plain District, you also have a new septic system and the total calculations, which are on the lower-left corner of the plan, show that you have a net decrease in fill material within the floodplain, so that you have in excess of one thousand cubic feet of additional floodplain volume provided by the project. So, you get your utilities above the floodplain, you get your living space above the floodplain, you have a new compliant septic system and you have more flood volume provided by the project. You know, and the variance criteria, you're, as we're all familiar with those, under Section ten and your bylaw G six B three, you have to find that owing to the circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape or topography of the land, that, that you have some, that's affecting the land or structures, but not generally the zoning district in which it's located, literal enforcement when it involves substantial hardship. I think that's exactly what we have here. We have a unique situation where the house and all of the land are within the Flood Plain District, it's within a single-family zoning district. You have the unique circumstance of the, of the elevation, the topography, the proximity to the river. You have the unique situation of an existing house that's sitting below that flood level and the opportunity to, to comply with the original intent of the, of both the, the, the primary zoning district, the single-family zoning district, as well as the overlay by improving and protecting the Flood Plain District. That's the sum and substance of the presentation. If you have specific questions about details on the numbers and the calculations, we can get into those and point them out on the plans.
So just for clarification then, so you're not seeking a special permit, you're seeking a variance under six, under, under G six B three?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. The, the project as its design would not comply with the special permit criteria under D five C. That's the limit, a twenty-five percent increase. And as I expressed, where the, the rule under, under D five would prohibit new construction. And we're proposing new construction as a means of eliminating that pre-existing non-conformity and bringing the property into compliance with the intent of the rule.
And just, nothing really matters right here, right now, but I do have a question about the septic system. How do you deal with a septic system that's in a, that's in a floodplain?
It's actually very common to have septic systems located within floodplains. The key is to have the, the leaching system elevated above the, the, the seasonal high groundwater. And during those occasions when you have a flood, the, the septic system would probably not be in operation because people wouldn't be in the house at that time anyway. But they're designed so that they're floodproof, you have buoyancy calculations that have been provided that make sure that the tank doesn't pop out of the ground. And it's my understanding that actually the Board of Health has already given its, its approval for the, for the septic design. We have held off going forward with the notice of intent at this point because the Conservation Commission's initial response when, when the plan was presented is that they would not proceed, as is their statutory right, that they would not proceed until the zoning board had acted and given approval under zoning.
Okay. And my, my other question right now is, so how would this house be constructed? Would it be constructed on like stilts, like near, near coastal areas? Or is this just, just a foundation that's up high?
It's, it actually is proposed on a, on a poured concrete foundation, but it's designed with flow, flow-through panels within it so that during a flood event, the water would flow through the openings in the concrete foundation. So you have the, the underside of the living space waterproofed and elevated above where the flood would go. So it's just a, it's not a, it's not a, it's not slab-on grade and it's not a full basement. It's a, a, a concrete wall with the openings.
Did I hear you say that the Board of Health has approved a septic, septic plan in the floodplain?
I'll defer to Mr. Goddard, that's my understanding.
Dan Merrick in American Engineering, sorry, Dan Merrick in from American Engineering is the design engineer on it. So he had presented this to the health agent and they went through a couple of minor revisions on the details of the, of the, of the tank and such like that. But, but yeah, the, the Board, the Board of Health has completed its review of this project.
Board of Health has.
Right. I think, I mean, I'm curious with CONCOM. I'd like to have CONCOM weigh in on this.
Right, so the CONCOM is, is wanting to, we have to kind of get through this process first and then we'll be subject to a notice of intent and order of conditions. So certainly, this project cannot proceed without an order of conditions. That's necessary for however we conclude this process.
So you haven't go to the CONCOM yet at all?
We, we went to the Conservation Commission and their response was they wanted to have us go to the zoning board first before they began processing the permit. Under the Wetlands Protection Act, there's a specific provision that, that a notice of intent filed under the Wetlands Protection Act is not considered timely until you have either obtained or at least applied for all other applicable permits. So they really, they were within their right to tell us, go to the zoning board first and come back to us.
I'd like to talk to CONCOM.
Yeah. Yeah, what do you, you know, I'm concerned, in two thousand fourteen you applied for a similar type of project, didn't you, not on this property?
There was, there was a different party that applied for that.
It wasn't you?
No.
And it was, and it, because of the CONCOM issues, it was rejected?
It was rejected for two reasons from, one was they were unable to get through the Board of Health process, which we have now gotten through the Board of Health process. And secondly, they were unable to balance their floodplain calculations. So they, they were asking for too much fill in the floodplain. So we, we have a whole different design team, whole new engineer. We did our own calculations, we have a lot less fill in the floodplain and we made it so that we're actually creating additional flood storage. This is a completely different project that satisfies all the requirements that Conservation Commission, I believe, will be satisfied with.
And I guess for the attorney is, you're asking for a variance, but you're not asking, you're asking for a variance, but you're not specifying a bylaw. So what I'm, what I'm conflicted with is, we have bylaws and, and clearly, D five, D two is the bylaw that if you read it, you would say you can't do this. Because you're in the floodplain.
That's right.
The land will be flooded.
That's right.
So you're asking for a variance to our zoning bylaws in general, all our zoning bylaws?
No.
Well, you're asking for a blanket variance.
No, sir.
We, you're not specifying, what, what bylaw are you specifying your variance to?
In the, in the very first, the very first sentence of the, of the cover letter, I'm asking for a variance from Section D point five point C and D point five point D point two.
We don't issue, that, that would be a special permit.
No, it's a D, D point five point C is the zoning bylaw provision that allows certain work if it's by special permit. And we're acknowledging we can't comply with that standard with the design that's proposed. So we're asking for a variance from the, from that requirement. And then, D point five point D point two is the provision that prohibits any new construction within the, the Flood Plain District and we're asking for the variance from that because rather than developing a brand-new lot that's undeveloped within the Flood Plain District, we have an existing house within the Flood Plain District. And the, the ramification of your denying the variance to allow us to build a new house that actually is elevated above the floodplain is that you, you leave us with no recourse but to go ahead and rehab the existing building, which seems unwise. So we're proposing something where we're asking for the variance from the prohibition against new construction so that we can, we can eliminate that non-conforming house that's, that's got the first floor elevation flooded by five feet of floodwaters during a hundred-year storm event and to elevate the house above the floodplain.
So you're, am I correct in, where you're sort of asking for two?
I think that there are, there are two sections that would need to be varied. Really, I guess if you, if you look at it as D point five point D point two is the one that prohibits new construction within the floodplain, if you were to grant that, you may be right, we wouldn't need D point five point C. But I figured if I'm here and I'm asking for a variance and it makes sense, just in case anybody could interpret it that we, we didn't ask for all the relief that we needed, I better ask for both.
And, and D five C is, D five C is, hey, we want to build something in excess of twenty-five percent of what's presently there, is that correct?
Yes, D, D five C is the provision that, that you may apply for up to twenty-five percent more area than the existing building and when you do so, it's a special permit.
Okay.
And so I was looking at that as, there's a limit of up to twenty-five percent and we want to go beyond that.
You want to exceed, that's, that's one of your, sort of, that's one of your concerns, one of your requests.
That's right.
And the other one is, hey, can we build in a floodplain?
Can we, yes, can we build a new structure in a floodplain?
Okay.
Yes, but again, D five C one, you would ask for a special permit to exceed the twenty-five percent.
No, I haven't asked for a special permit.
You haven't, but that's what D five C one says you can do.
You know, should you?
You're asking for an large, more than twenty-five percent. So you're asking for a special permit, but you're really then saying, I want a variance. See, I don't know if you can have your cake and eat it too.
Or if you just, or if you should be asking for both?
He should be asking for a special permit for D five C one, but the pro, and then he's asking for us to give him a variance.
Variance from D five D two.
To D five D two, a variance, which we are only allowed to grant a special permit.
But then, under, under G six B three?
It says we can, we can.
We, we can, we can decide on petitions for variances.
But we can only do that if the proposals will comply with all respects and provisions of the underlying district within the land and also underlying current, current bylaws, wetland and protection issues.
If I may ask, I, I was viewing.
I think we need some, go ahead.
So, D five C one.
G six B three?
Yep.
Which is one of the provisions I'm asking for variance from. Says that no, no new buildings or structures shall be erected or constructed in any existing building prior to the establishment of this bylaw shall not be altered or enlarged to more than twenty-five percent of its original size or moved. So I said, well, we want to build a new building, that's prohibited by D five C one and I want to, I want to expand it by more than twenty-five percent of its existing size. So if I want to do that, I need to get a variance because I'm not applying for a special permit with this, I'm asking to vary it.
I guess, is that a question, should you be applying for a special permit? Why wouldn't you apply for a special permit, is there, is there? So, again, so just, just to sort of repeat a little bit what you said. So, in order for you to, let's forget the floodplain, so just for a second. If you want to build a house in excess of twenty-five percent of the existing, you'd need a special permit. Correct? Is that correct?
Correct.
Because it's go. You could, if you want to build a house that's expanding it up to twenty-five percent more, just, just not the whole house, but to, to increase an existing structure by up to twenty-five percent.
To no more than twenty-five percent.
To no more than twenty-five percent of what's already there. But you, but leaving what's already there in place.
Oh, oh, okay, so, and that requires a special permit to, to, to do that?
That's right.
So, so, so then is, is D five C irrelevant? Because you, because you're not doing that, you're, you're scrapping this maximum twenty-five percent and you're going beyond it saying, I want to build something larger than twenty-five percent?
Well, because D five C creates the twenty-five percent limit, that's why I'm asking for the variance from it because that, it's creating, it's creating that limit. I'm saying, if I'm gonna build a new building that is that much larger than the existing building but actually creates more floodplain storage volume, why wouldn't I ask for that and, and have a variance granted?
I have a, I want to back up a step. As you know, variances aren't given out very often and one of the criteria is for soil condition, shape of the lot or topography.
That's right.
Which one of those are you making your argument on?
I would say it's, 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 it's primarily the topography because the topography is, is what has the entire property within the floodplain elevation. There is no, there is no high point on this property or even if you were to go all the way across the other side of the street, that's, that's elevated above the floodplain district.
But it has to be unique.
Yes, to this property.
To this, to this, and to the zoning district.
And this entire zoning district is in the floodplain. So it's not unique to any of the other properties.
It's not unique in that sense.
It's, it's, it's unique if you look at it from the perspective of a single-family zoning district with a house that's already there that had the floodplain zoning overlay district overlaid over that, that house. So the unique circumstance is that you have an existing house with, with the first floor elevation five feet below the floodplain. So, topography is, is the, the special circumstance that, that makes it fit that criteria and it's especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district because this structure is located where the first floor is five feet below the floodplain. So it meets both of those criteria and literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the property. Well, it's because if you don't grant the relief, this, this property is stuck with this existing house built in nineteen fifty-two with the first floor elevation so low that it would get flooded during a hundred-year storm. So you have topography, you have. So you have topography, you have a unique situation, an existing house located within the flood plane.
But you're not unique to the zoning district. Every house over there has the same exact situation, so it's not unique. And it has to be unique to meet that criteria.
Not all of the land within that zoning district has houses on it.
But those that do are all the same situation, and the zoning district in which it lies all have the same condition. So what makes this one unique to those? Because we've obviously had other properties come in from that area who have asked for the same type of relief.
Well, have you? I haven't seen zoning denials to rehabilitate houses in the flood plane. Certainly seen denials if someone came in asking for permit to build a new house on a vacant lot, and that would make perfect sense. But your unique circumstance here is, you have this existing house that's within the flood district, and someone's proposing to elevate it completely out of the flood plane. And where the existing house is slab-on-grade, it's impossible to jack the house up, you know, and just elevate it up on a higher foundation, unlike a house that's built on a regular foundation with a basement. You can't put in the I-beams and just elevate the house. So there's no way to save this house other than to, and to actually elevate it, you have to tear it down and build a new one. I would suggest that not every house within this flood plane district is a slab-on-grade.
Let me ask this question, just so I can just get my mind straight here a little bit. Suppose you were building a house that did not exceed the 25%, then you would be applying for a special permit and not a variance, correct? Just hypothetically.
Well, hypothetically, yes. If we were proposing to expand the house by only 25%, we would be applying for a special permit.
Okay.
But, but I don't think that building a new house that's less than 25% bigger than the existing house is eligible for that permit. So you could build in addition to this house, it's 800 and something square feet, so you could build a 200-square-foot addition to it and leave the 800 and something that's there in the flood plane.
Yep.
So the way the bylaw is written, we're not allowed to apply for a special permit to eliminate that non-conformity, other than by applying for a variance. Yes.
Questions, other questions from the board members?
Confused. I'm a little confused.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a tricky one. Do you have any other questions at this time?
No, I think we've got some issues for CONCOM that I want to talk to them about. And I do have some issues with the variance as a variance request. I don't think, I disagree, and I think I maybe bring town council in on this with regard to whether or not we even have the right to give a variance based on D5D2. But I think that's a question for town council.
If, would that be Dan Hill, who was in here just for the last hearing?
No.
Someone else?
Our town council.
Oh, your town council, okay.
I just have some issues with those. I think it gets a little complicated. And also, we just received Janet's package tonight, so I think I'd like to read through what was, what the reasons in 2014 were for this property. Because I think it's actually had two or three, this has been, this is the second or third try on the same property, and I don't know the difference in the provisions. I know Janet didn't give us a complete review. I did talk to Wade, who said that the infills and the outflows of the septic are above the flood plane, and that's why he approved the septic system. So yes, you do have an approved septic system, but CONCOM hasn't weighed in completely on whether or not it meets state or local wetlands acts.
Right. We understand that CONCOM hasn't weighed in on it because we haven't filed the application with them purposefully to make sure that we put a check mark in this box first.
So this is really analysis of variance criteria? That's really what this is?
Well, that's our job, but I think it's a question whether or not we can, it can be viewed as a variance. I guess I have some issues whether or not this is a special permit, because we have the authority in D5D2 to issue a special permit.
Yeah, but he's.
He's saying he wants to, he wants us to, he wants to override that and allow us to give him a variance.
No, what he's saying, he said it doesn't apply. It doesn't apply because he wants.
Well, it does apply, he can't, he can't meet that criteria, so he wants a variance, because they can't meet that criteria.
By building a house up to 25%?
It says, it says, any land neither subject to flooding, the board, we can issue a special permit if property is not subject to flooding within the flood plane district. This property is subject to flooding, so we can issue a special permit. So what he's saying is, I want you to issue me a variance. So you go, where is, what variance is he applying for? He's applying for a general variance to our bylaws.
No, I understand, but D5C limits anybody.
Don't even, you can't, D5C doesn't even apply here, because you've got to go to D5D2, which says that he cannot, we cannot approve a special permit to rebuild this
I understand.
if it's subject to flooding.
Right, no, I understand.
Any state, you state that in your, in your letter upfront.
Yeah. D5D2 is just not available for us because that's available to get an exception special permit as it's described. I'm not sure what an exception of special permit means, but.
Well, it's not, the word exception is wrong. Make grand a special permit.
Well, it's there.
It's even an exception of special permit.
I highlighted, but in any event, that special permit is applicable only if you can show the land is shown to be neither subject to flooding nor unsuitable for the proposed use because of hydrological and topographical conditions. And that means you have to show both of those, and we readily acknowledge the entire property is subject to flooding.
Is it fair enough to characterize this as, this is new construction in a flood plane, period?
No, you can't.
No, 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 can you characterize, is that what you're trying to do? It seems to me, in other words, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around whether or not D, I know you referenced D because of the 25% limitation on, you know, expanding a pre-existing condition. But in reality, you're really not expanding a pre-existing condition, you're really tearing a house down, you've got to build a brand-spanking new house from the ground up. And so I'm wondering, I'm really, I'm just trying to like make sure that we're all in the same, sometimes we have a tendency to argue a point that's moot. And so what I'm trying to do is refine what is this argument is going to be about. And so I'm not so sure, I'm not so sure if D5C or D5D2 applies at this point? And really, this is really a question of, this is really a question of G6B3?
Sorry, which provision are you looking at?
G6B3, the powers that the board has for a variance, you know? Am I correct in that, am I correct in just, I'm just trying to refine really what the...
The application is filed specifically under your variance powers, G6, that's correct. And the reason that I've referenced D5C is that it provides that no new building or structure shall be erected or constructed within this area, and no, and any existing building prior to establishment of this bylaw shall not be altered or enlarged to more than 25% of its original size. So.
Really, you're not altering your logic, you're going to tear one down.
We are proposing to tear it down, and we are proposing to build a new building in its place. And the reason that we're asking for variance and argue that it is, that we satisfy the variance criteria is that you meet all of those special criteria in the variance, and the design as proposed furthers the interest of the bylaw itself. It is making, the neighborhood is making this specific area, this specific property safer during floods.
Oh, absolutely. I could not argue with you, the fact that what you're proposing is probably better than what's there, but the question for us is whether or not we can actually do anything about it. You know, that's.
That's what variances are for.
Well, yeah, but, you know, it's, this is not a, it's just, it's, it needs a lot of analysis, I think, I really.
We've got some homework to do.
Glad to have town council weighing in.
And we're going to have council weigh in, we want to check with the CONCOM, I see there are some folks here, do you have any questions?
No, yeah.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so let's continue this hearing.
I have, one quick question. D5C4 says that no septic tanks, leach fields, or sewer lines shall be installed in the flood plain/wetlands protection district. And there's a septic tank in leach field going to be installed on this property. Can you explain that?
Yeah, you have an existing house that has an existing cesspool.
Yep.
So it's, it makes sense, if you're going to build a new house, to upgrade the non-compliant cesspool that's already in the flood plane, and you can design it and build it so that it is safe, it doesn't have buoyancy and pop out of the ground, does a better job of treating the effluent than a cesspool does. So that's another item that, we're asking for a variance from D5C.
Okay. And just one last quick question, I was just looking at the buoyancy calculations and with respect to just public safety. I see that it appears that the groundwater elevation may have been used in the buoyancy calculations. I just want to make sure that if there was a 100-year flood, then the actual water elevation wouldn't be 130.5, it would be the 100-year flood elevation. I'm just, I'm not sure how that calculation would be made, I just.
I would defer to the engineer on that, and I assume that that was a question that was reviewed by the Board of Health as well before it gave its approval on it. But we'd be glad to come back, since it appears we're going to continue doing another hearing in any event, and can give you additional response on that.
What's the, go ahead, Chris, why don't you?
Amy, what are we, on the 20th, is that our next, yeah, okay.
Continue.
December 20th?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for Berlin Land Realty Trust trustee Scott Goddard till December 20th at 7:15. For a variance pursuant of MGL Chapter 48, Section 10, and Section D5D2 of the Norfolk zoning bylaws to allow the removal of existing non-compliant single-family home located within the flood plane district and construction of a new home on that site. Property being located at 60 River Road, Sessors Map 4, Block 27, Lot 8, in the R2 zoning district.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no other business on our agenda this evening, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the zoning board of appeals meeting at 9:40 p.m. on November 9th.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.